Alright, good evening everyone. I will call this meeting to order at five oh two. In accordance with the state sunshine law, a notice of this meeting is provided by the county. Meeting on January fourth, two thousand twenty-three, December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, and January third, two thousand twenty-four. Notice was provided for education members, Montgomery Township Clerk, Rockville Clerk, Public Library Township Posting, School Posting, PTSSA Officers, Curvier News, President Packett, Trent Times, and the Starlight. The board reserves the right to enter into executive session in all meetings of the Board of Education. This meeting is being ordered for the purpose of board review, future reference, and to assist in preparation of events. At this time, I will announce the results of the annual school election of November seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Montgomery had three three-year terms up for voting. The winning candidates were Christina Harris, Victoria Cookie, Franco Herman, and Sal Dispenso Walls. At this time, we will swear an oath to the candidates. Alright, you guys have to help him, come on. Alright, I say your name.
I, Victoria Franklin Herman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same government established in the United States and this state.
To the same government established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I say your name.
I, Victoria Franco Herman.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
And not disqualified as a voter.
And not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS nineteen four point one.
Pursuant to RS nineteen four point one.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all duties.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all duties.
Of that office according to the best in my ability.
Of that office according to the best in my ability.
Congratulations to the new board members. This is the rule of course, as we have a full board. First item, two thousand twenty-four. So Mr. Carlson, here. Ms. Dowling.
Here.
Ms. Vila.
Here.
Ms. Franco Herman.
Present.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Dr. Spencer Wallace.
Present.
Ms. Sina.
Present.
Ms. Valicka Dernan.
Here.
Thank you. We have nine members present. We have a new forum. Oh, Mr. Tucker.
I'm here.
Alright, so... We will conduct this smoothpoke flag. Everybody can rise. At this time, the board will be going into executive session. The selected meeting executive session no longer than thirty minutes. This replaces the executive session at the end of the agenda. The open public meetings in Act Act two thirty-one of the laws of nineteen seventy-five provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of the meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters with confidentiality required, as permitted in section seven of the act. The board will be discussing personnel matters, individual privacy, and HIV. Can I have a motion to move it to executive?
Sure.
Second. Thank you. Can I have a motion to move the board into executive session at six nineteen?
Sure.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I think we can move to executive session. At this point, we will open the floor for nominations of the president of Montgomery Township.
I would like to nominate Patrick Todd for president of the Board of Education.
Okay.
I would like to nominate Patrick Todd for president of the Board of Education.
Thank you. You have your nominations.
I would like to nominate Melanie Alcainia for the board's district.
Thank you. To a due procedure, we will move over to the board nominations.
We do have a moment to talk about that. Since there are two people who are running it, I guess I'd like to understand what the differences are.
The differences are between the candidates?
Yeah. Okay. So, who was the last candidate?
Are there any further nominations? We will close. Thank you. I have those nominations. Open the floor for discussions. Carlson.
So, the last couple, since we've had the occasion of... Yeah, I wish you said, come on. And I guess I'm wondering... Are you not hearing me? I told you I don't speak louder than I am. There we go. I guess I'm wondering what changes you might have in mind or what you think needs to be fixed or is working just fine. Should I have explained the differences?
Patrick, how would you say?
Appreciate it. Thank you. Uh, thank you for your question, Mr. Carlson. Um, it's really not that difficult. This board, we're gonna have differences. There's nine different opinions. But we need to communicate better as a board, speak freely, but speak intelligently with each other. The bottom line is, we are here for the students in Montgomery. That's our whole, that's our mission. Our mission is to make sure these schools run well, not to run the school, but to make sure they're running well. And to do that, as a board, we must be together. We're not gonna agree on every single aspect, but we'll disagree on the road of how to get somewhere, but the destination has to be the same, and again, is to speak to and speak for these children of Montgomery.
So does that mean we're in a situation of what we had there with the later changes?
What changes are there before? I mean, there's different leadership styles. It could be a million different. We'll have to see it as it goes.
You'd like me to answer?
So I think being on the board for the last twelve months has definitely opened a lot of learning and opportunities for myself. I think for the school district, it is going to be very important to focus this year on our strategic plan. I think last year, we attempted to have, do a better job with communication. I think Michelle has always been very vocal about the fact that we haven't quite uncovered how to just do that. We have outdated policies that I would like to tackle. We have some misprints. We have some areas that we haven't reviewed over the last few years, and that's one of the things I've been asking for as well. And we'll continue working through of reviewing all of our policies and ensuring that they are up to date, valid, truly represented as a mandate or as a recommendation, et cetera. And I think the last part is for us to really function as a board of nine. My vision is for us to have a very good and clear path to continuing to work together and address issues together. Committees are one thing, but I think we have an opportunity to improve the way that we distribute that knowledge across the entire board and not just vote, but really have those discussions and really collectively make these decisions. So, thank you for the question. I appreciate it.
Is there any further discussion? So the first, so we will vote on the nomination for Mr. Todd first. If Mr. Todd has not received majority votes, then we will move on to Mr. Herrick. Mr. Carlson. For Mr. Todd. Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Vila.
No.
Ms. Franco Herman.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yeah.
Dr. Spencer Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. Sina.
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Ms. Valicka Dernan?
No.
Thank you. The motion carries six three. Mr. Todd? Please proceed.
Thank you, board members. I appreciate it. Looking forward to working with everyone in the community. Yes, it's kind of a good work. We'll start off now with nominations for first vice president. Nomination number.
Sorry, before we vote for first vice president, can we discuss the idea of having one vice president versus having two? Would anybody like to have?
Or?
Can we discuss why that is, since we've had two vice presidents over the last two years? Is there a benefit to having one versus two?
I personally don't understand why we have two vice presidents. I think it's only because I have only one, then the leadership has slipped, and then talking to the competition would be better.
I agree.
I agree. But if you just for, with two vice presidents, was waiting in the room, he felt that there were things that were not be done as quickly because there would be people at that time. So we decided to have one, so that president would be assisted in coaching the different members. But it's actually, over the last four years, I don't... I think having one or two, I think that's why the policy says one or two. So at this point, you know, having one is not a, one vice president is not a...
So, should we vote on one or two vice presidents, or would that be?
I don't know.
Uh, if you'd like to make a motion.
I'd make a motion. To have one vice president.
So there's a motion. There's a motion on the floor to change from two vice presidents to one vice president. And there's a second.
Wait. Can we keep that as a policy, so that future boards can decide whether they want one or two, but then have this coming along when you vote, whether you want one or two?
I have a motion.
Microphone.
I'm going to have one vice president.
Hi, sir. Sir. The proper rule is second to have, to move from two vice presidents to one vice president. Are any questions? And that to change the policy.
Yeah, and it gives other future boards the option to have one or two. You better know what you decide. We're not letting you have a brother. So whatever board initiative, you decide what works best for them.
Any other questions to discuss?
We will be voting.
Any other questions?
I think it sounds like we have a hard time making a motion, right? So...
Ms. Dowling, would you like to make your motion?
For the twenty twenty-four calendar year, but again, we vote for a new year anyway, so I... I would keep it for twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Herrick.
Policy giving discretion, you're not enforcing the policy, you're not exercising, whether you do want one or two vice presidents or four or five school years. With the policy still existing, you must be able to choose to leave. You decide whether to exercise discretion and have one or two vice presidents.
So the motion, as stated by Ms. Dowling's stance, any other questions to discuss? I don't know. You ready for the vote? Mr. Trent. Mr. Carlson. Yes.
Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Vila.
Yes.
Ms. Franco Herman.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Spencer Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. Sina.
Yes.
Ms. Valicka Dernan.
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
You make your motion, guys.
Like Mr. Trent. Next item on business is accept a motion for items, organization items eight through... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. The floor is now open for the first vice president nomination.
Just please.
Vice president nomination.
I would like to nominate, uh, Julia Vila. I would like to nominate Maria Sina.
Well, it's like, I'd like to nominate, uh, what would be counted?
Do you think the nomination accepted, the nomination?
Yes.
Ms. Dowling?
Yes.
Yes.
Question, discussion for the nomination? Mr. Carlson.
I'd like to ask the same question. I know the AP is, is, doesn't have as much responsibility as president, and the last president's bedside. So I think the same question would be normal. I think we have questions, okay? Any nominations here? What would you change or change when you're, when you're jumping thoughts, direction of the board? And, yeah, that's it. What changes, what would you make?
I think that as a board, we need to do best to let them in professional development. So, in my role, I will support the board president in bringing the best training possible for our board to not only understand better the school, the ethics rules, but also be able to find resources that will allow us to connect better with the community. And I do want the other board to be more connected with the community. We do have ability to bring more concerns to our attention and just give the parents who voted for us to sit on the board platform, be heard, to have their issues addressed. I know I am a very, very part to make the best possible decisions for the school issue, and I thank the board. And I know that Jack is an incredible addition to our district. And, you know, his contributions to what he has already accomplished are just amazing. But I do want to feel more connected with the community, with the board, with the administrators. And I do want to feel like one if you, you know, or two of us. But, um, but that's one group, that's one's ashwab.
I think if I'm... Uh, in supporting the board president and the entire board in the locker room, I think that, again, we should work with communication and transparency, with, um... Being transparent with each other, the community, and within our committees, as well as during our support meetings, and all of that is very important. I would agree with the board of board who wants to start again, that there are some policies that we need to tighten, and I think that's, you know, work that really is important to be done. And, um, I think that we need to try to figure out how to move forward for that one, as well as a strategic plan, which has been, so far, you know, going well. We had our first meeting, and we wanted the community's input. We've got so many people who came and guided that input. So I would, I would really go hard for communication, our strategic plan, and just to take our colleagues.
I agree with both my colleagues. I would just further say to exercise my leadership skills in being able to build consensus as a board. I think we really turned a corner, and I think we had the opportunity to be able to speak with one voice. And so I'm really looking forward to just being able to better build a sense of trust among all my board members, to really give each of us an equal partnership in the work that we're trying to do and the work we're trying to move forward, to empower our superintendent to be the vision and the voice of our district schools, and to be able to see the strategic plan in the board. I really look forward to putting the right people on the bus and in the right seats to be able to move this work forward.
You have questions, comments?
I actually have a question about the board. It was a little surprising. We could vote for one person, then another, is that normal? Because it seems to give the first person who voted for advance, all eight of them, you know, the last one. That was odd. Is that a scenario?
The question is, why do we vote on one person and not, you know, the other? Because the first person gets the majority of the votes. It's not a popular, very contested, and it's the first person, isn't it?
Absolutely. The first person received five votes, and then the second person, twenty, that received six.
Mr. Herrick, would you like to help me with this?
Sure. But if you had three candidates and nine votes, you would simply have three, you... If you have the first combination, five votes, you'd be in favor, and three, or three, voted up. But we would be given each candidate an opportunity. Putting all three together at the same time is organizing chaos.
With everybody, nobody wants to vote now. So the first, first candidate would like more likely to win.
I understand you don't want to off the vote, but it's part of the process. How you do consider the possibility? Any other questions, comments? Alright, nomination to close. Mr. Trent. Yes, the first vote was for Ms. Vila. Mr. Carlson. Yes. Ms. Dowling.
No.
Ms. Vila.
Yes.
Ms. Franco Herman.
No.
Ms. Harris.
No.
Dr. Spencer Wallace.
No.
Ms. Sina.
No.
Ms. Valicka Dernan?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
No.
Thank you. Motion was not carried. Second, instead of voting, this for Ms. Sina. Mr. Carlson.
No.
Ms. Dowling.
No.
Ms. Vila.
No.
Ms. Franco Herman.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Dr. Spencer Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. Sina.
Yeah.
Ms. Valicka Dernan?
No.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Good work.
Alright, next on our agenda, entertaining a motion for organization items eight through twenty. The proper rule is second to accept, uh, organization items eight through twenty. Call for the question. Any questions? Discuss. Harry, none? Mr. Trent? Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Dowling?
Yes.
Ms. Vila?
Yes.
Ms. Franco Herman?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Dr. Spencer Wallace?
Yes.
Ms. Valicka Dernan?
Yes.
Ms. Sina?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is the NJ SBA code of ethics for school board members. Mr. Trent? Yeah, so everybody has a copy of this at their seats over here in January twenty-third. Uh, to do the training. It would have been, there's conflict, and that's why we didn't move it to January twenty-third, because I didn't know everybody. Mr. Trent?
Yes. Next item is appointments. The board president in consultation with the vice president will make the following committee assignments for twenty twenty-four. We will attempt to get these out within the next seventy-two hours. I think there are some committee meetings either Tuesday or Wednesday. So we'll try to get these out as soon as possible. Uh, the following committees are members of the assessment curriculum and instruction committee, ACI, equity committee, members of the human resource committee, members of operations, facilitating, and finance committee, members of the policy and communications committee, legislative liaison for purposes of receiving materials, board liaison to the Montgomery Township PTA, PTSA, and our PTO, board liaison to special education PTA, liaisons to Montgomery Township, Rockdale Municipal Alliance Committee, negotiations, CWA, MTEA, and AP, SMT, voting member and alternate to the New Jersey School Board Association, member and alternate to the executive committee of Somerset County School Board Association, delegate and alternate to the Somerset County Educational Services Commission, and liaison to Montgomery Township Municipal Committee. Alright, uh, item number twenty-two is the annual ethics training. Mr. Trent has stated, your program will be here on January twenty-third to give us our annual ethics training. Alright. Board and public comments. Members of the public are allowed a one opportunity to address the board regarding the action agenda or any other business for approximately three minutes during this period of the meeting. All comments will be directed toward the board. Before you make a comment, please state your name, address, and right vote, and the pro vote provided. Be mindful of rights regarding students, board employees, and board members, and to avoid any potential libel building on the part of the speaker. The board discourages affirmative and discouraging remarks. The public comments courses of the meeting will not structure this question and answer session. The board may need to refer to issue to the superintendent if the issue is not handled for the appropriate chain of command. We start with the school level. The response will be provided at the end of this session. Signing off, I'll take it. Okay. And just so, any other, any others that wish to make comments, please, line up so we can move through this. And sign up.
Hi, my name is Alex Wilson. I live on Covehatch Road. I have two kids in the schools. I have an eighth grader and a fifth grader. And I just want to say thank you to those of you who are doing this, especially if you have kids in our school. I think it's important that you partake. Um, so I'm here to talk about school start times. I also serve under the Montgomery Township Board of Health, and I'm a physician by trade. And I understand that the Board of Health has sent a letter roughly two years ago to you guys to look at our school start times. Um, there are clear and distinct recommendations from the American Academy of Pediatrics that schools should never start before eight-thirty in the morning. It leads to increased suicide, depression, obesity rates, among teenagers especially. I understand that busing is a problem, but I think it should be looked at again. I also understand that there may be some resistance from the high school teachers. I think this should be looked at again as well. Um, I think something to be looked at is whether or not we really need two separate buses for lower and middle schools, and if whether or not one bus can take kids to both locations. Um, but hopefully this gets looked at again this year. It's a really important topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, good evening. Joe Buck's, Springfield Township. I'm actually a board of Burlington, Board of Education, uh, board member. I'm not an authorized board member. I speak on the weekend. I'm speaking tonight in Miami. I'm also a certified board leader by the New Jersey School Association. Congratulations to those of us sworn in tonight, uh, and new president, vice president. Uh, I made it a habit of kind of making my way around the state to the awards, to kind of see what I can learn, maybe what knowledge I can share with other boards. And, um, election officers. And, um, election officers always seems to be a, a ongoing problem where, even my board, my original board, um, we got it wrong a couple of times. And I, I invite you guys to kind of take a look at your policy, and this is policy one fifty-two. And in that, it calls out, there's a verbal wall called wall call. And under Robert's rules, that wall call, uh, is the nominations you put in, and then a vote is cast by me for the purposes of avoiding that sort of imbalance or advantage of giving the first one to the nominee. So, um, it might be something, again, I think Strauss estimate is maybe, um, a source for this and why it's a problem for so many boards. Um, but it might be something you guys might remember and visit, so that next year when you come back around for this, um, that it kind of gets executed properly. And it does get lost because the language in the policy really is a great. So, um, that was all I wanted to come and repeat to you guys. So, congrats and, uh, good looks, uh, good, uh, good luck serving the, uh, students of Montgomery. Thank you.
Thank you for that invitation. Can you repeat that policy number?
One five.
It's one five two. Okay, thank you, Smiley.
You're welcome.
I'm glad you did.
Oh, hi, everybody. Uh, Joe Grant says, let me see, drive. What a heck of a way to spend a Friday night, huh? It's clear, good seeing you all here. Single father, so, uh, this is my interesting thing for the night. Uh, first, congratulations to, uh, Mr. Todd and, uh, Mrs. Vina on your, uh, mention to the board officer roles. I appreciate that very much, your service, and as I appreciate all the board members' services, so thank you for your service. The, uh, press here is remarked by, I'm going to say, uh, acrimony, and I'm going to state that I think that the cause of that acrimony is a lack of transparency and a lack of listening on the board of the partner board, and more specifically, a lack of listening to the parents. So some of the pitches I heard from those that were trying to advance a candidacy for these officers' positions, I heard one mention a chance parents, and one mentioned a parents. And I would argue that these board members here are here as a proxy for the parents. And you talk about yourselves, you talk about getting along together in one voice. It's not about, I think it's not about you as board members. It's not about even getting along with yourselves as board members. In fact, if you all agree, I'd be well. But I think it's about listening to parents and acting as a proxy for the parents. And I applaud your remarks about transparency. If you are transparent, not much can go wrong. That's being truthful, that's being honest, that's being straightforward. Not much can go wrong. There could be some discussion and some contention. That's okay, that's good. But not much can go wrong if you're honest and transparent and willing. So welcome to your new roles. I look forward to being with you as you progress through this current year. And once again, thank you all board members, uh, for being part of our community. Gunner. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Um, I also want to pass on my congratulations to the re-elected board members and to the new officers, uh, and to the rest of you who are serving, and, uh, good luck in this coming year. Uh, I really just wanted to say that I appreciate that the district has begun the strategic planning process. Uh, I was at the meeting that was held earlier, uh, and I think that there were some good things that came out of it. I think that the issue now is to keep the momentum going and to really decide where are we going. It's good to know where we're coming, where we're at now, but it's really a discussion of where are we going, what do we think that ways that we can improve or do, uh, better for our students. Uh, and so I would hope that the next meeting has a wider turnout from the community. Uh, there was a good number of community members, there was a number of staff members that were there, but, uh, I think it would, uh, improve the community to, uh, come out and be a part of the process. And so with that, thank you very much for your service.
And just a reminder, the second strategic meeting is January thirty-first.
January seventy, in Lower Baltimore.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Adam Hackel. I'm a teacher here at Orchard Hill Elementary and the vice president of the Montgomery Teacher, excuse me, Montgomery Township Education Association. I'm speaking in behalf of Jim Dolan, our president, who is ill. Uh, I just want to say on behalf of the MTA, thank you all for your service, for the time that you put in both during these meetings and the time that you prepare for these meetings and the time that you prepare for the correspondence. I also want to thank both of the officers who have served, excuse me, the three officers who have served in the past, and thank you to the officers who will be serving in the future. We have had a wonderful relationship with the Board of Education and past boards of education and the MTA. Greatly looks forward to working with the new officers and the new Board of Education. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the community? Area nine, public comments.
Yes, the first request about school start times, so that's a couple other strategic planning that I want you to know, even in addition to that, every year we look at the busing and we look at the different scenarios, and it is something that has always been on our, um, plate, so thank you. We're continuing to work.
Public comments, both. Moving on, uh, we'll entertain a motion for action items one point one through four point three. The proper rule of the second. Any questions along the motion? Discuss.
I want to add, um, I want to, to add a three in the order, uh, on the SBA. And we use that that five votes in the act to do so. If we as a board want to get clarification for further, uh, understanding of investigation of the act of the opinion, do we need to vote in public for five votes, vote in the majority to get that?
Are you sure the body of decision in our Board of Education is individualized to more of a subject matter than on the opinion? We have an effective discussion about the impact of that project being. So we will, we will report action if it is not insisted with the determination of five in the opinion, which is not according to it. Did it answer questions in the process in our internal, but as a determination made without, according to the, the recommendations, we could suggest a procedure which is typical trustees, chair of the board president, this administration, the technical questions that we submit to the board, third, the guidance of the town.
So there's not a majority of people on that, so is any, any one of the majority of that?
It would be the individuals, the parts of all parts of the project. Not some, not.
Thank you. Clarination, I don't want to go into that.
So there's no chance of you in a summary. I know Mary, uh, she picked up a glove and said that, you know, that it was in favor of, and I thought it was a summary. Like I'm talking about. Why thinking of discussing a mechanism to get the guidance of our office? And I believe it was, and to that, it would be provided, our office and this will be the administration, be forward to the board, through these officers, to give trustees the guidance and kind of further apply it back.
Any other comments, questions for on action items one point one through four point three? Area nine, Mr. Trent.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Fila.
Yes.
Ms. Frank Lohrman.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Dr. Spence Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. Flotterdern.
Yes.
Ms. Vina.
Yes.
Mr. Todd. Yes, any questions there? Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, here comes the conclusion of the re-oral meeting. Any other comments, questions about board members?
Chair. I would just like to make the announcement that our Blackpool High School, girls and boys varsity basketball team, we encourage you to look on the athletics page of a website to donate to our coaches versus cancer. I know the program has a goal, target goal of raising fourteen thousand dollars, and I believe they, um, submit that one hundred percent of the money that is donated to the, um, Robert Johnson, as it's connected to, um, the Brooklyn University, um, Cancer Institute. So I think there's a girls game tonight, a varsity girls game tonight. After my daughter has coached in the season, eight o'clock, I think, uh, who is it, I don't care, taking on the, uh, the, the Mustangs, so man, and then tomorrow is going to be a very exciting meeting for varsity basketball, I believe, that is at APN two at the high school gymnasium, and I believe they're taking on number four ranked, um, Leonard P. or Leonard P. Valley. So if you're available, for those single fathers out there, maybe the seventy-nine-year-old party, go out to the basketball game.
Any other comments, questions on the board? Area nine, now we'll entertain a motion for the Germans. The proper rule of the second, please stand in the Germans. Six fifty-six, be it. Thank you all for coming out. Be safe with this impending weather. Thank you again.